Okay, so we are coming back to the public area here. We just had our goal review. So we've already gone through a number of things, but I wanted to check back in on the board member oath of office, just so that we have this on the recorded meeting portion. So Mr. Alex Dejamis was appointed by the Long Hill Township Board of Education to fill a vacant seat at the March 17th, 2025 board meeting. He was, who was appointed, was sworn into office on Monday, March 31st, 2025 at 2:00 PM. The oath of office was administered by Robin Bomer, Business Administrator Board Secretary at 4 Essex Street, Bedminster, New Jersey. The oath was administered in accordance with NJSA 18A:12-2 and the applicable provisions of NJSA 41:1-1. Frank J. Moreno Esquire was present and served as a witness. Mr. Dejamis is now officially seated as a member of the Long Hill Township Board of Education. Congrats again.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move into our presentation of the strategic plan. Charlene Peterson from NJSPA.
Thank you so much. It is my pleasure to be here to talk with the board. I think this is the third strategic plan that I've assisted your community through. And so, you know, just to me, that alone says a lot about the, kind of, the importance that this board puts on having a strategic plan and having community input and having that then be the basis of, you know, the district goals that we set. So just tonight is just really just an overview of the process that we just went through and then the outcome. So first, again, just wanted to start out, you know, thanking you for the opportunity to really, you know, have everyone involved. I always say that this is so important to have stakeholder voice in helping us as we do our work. We always say from the board's perspective that we always want to know what our community is thinking and making sure that the work that we're doing aligns with what our community's expectations are. And the best way to do that is to bring them in and have them tell us, right? So this is the perfect opportunity to do that. So we just can't thank everyone enough who participated in this process because over the three meetings, I mean, we had some people that came to all three, we had some that came to just, you know, one of them, and some people even came like to the third one even. So we just, whatever was convenient for people, and that's really kind of the benefit of this process too, is that we want to hear from you as much as you, you know, are able to participate. So we always started out every meeting kind of making sure that we had that common understanding of strategic planning. Because I sometimes have even had, when I've gone to, you know, done these sessions, of people telling me that sometimes just that idea of strategic plan just sounds like clinical and it, you know, like I had somebody say like, "I didn't think that I knew enough about this," or "I didn't think that I had a good enough background to come and be part of this." And I'm like, it's really just sitting around the table and talking about your school district. And we kind of need to make sure that people have that understanding, right, about what we're doing here. So that's essentially what we're saying, that we are, we need your input to develop that roadmap. And again, that the focus should be on student achievement and the focus should be, you know, looking at a multi-year plan. So, you know, recognizing the benefits and, you know, this is a perfect example of demonstrating the community kind of how we now have set that baseline, that when we kicked off this plan, you know, the presentation started talking about what the last plan was and what we've accomplished, so that people can then see how, you know, we're using this work to move the district forward. So it was, you know, a series of three meetings, you know, with the first meeting in February kind of answering the question, where are we now? And from that perspective, we looked, we got information from the Superintendent State of the District Report, and then we broke into small groups, and then those small groups further completed that picture by identifying what they believed to be the district's strengths and then challenges and opportunities. So then we came back then, a few weeks later, and said, okay, if we know where we are now, then the next piece of this is to identify where do we want to be five years from now? And did a visioning exercise, and we'll look at that in just a minute. So these first two meetings then were really data gathering to give us the information then, so that we could develop that roadmap. And then that's what happened in the third meeting, where we said if we know where we are now, know where we want to be five years from now, then that roadmap is how are we going to get there? And so what's important is that the roadmap was really developed from the ground up. It took that information from the first two meetings, and then that's what drove what this roadmap would look like. So then from the, kind of, the stakeholders' perspective, that was our work then. Our work was to determine the what. So then that was what this roadmap was, and then we are now, you know, going to turn it over then to the administration and staff then to develop the how or the action plans and kind of essentially saying, here you go, here's the plan, here's the what, that our stakeholders have said that they would like the direction for us to go in in the next five years, and then we'll turn it over to you to tell us how you're going to accomplish that. We always shared your district's mission statement, recognizing that that should be part of the conversation, that as you're talking about these goals, making sure that it supports the mission statement. Like I said, it started out kind of with the Superintendent State of the District Report at the first meeting, and this really was just, you know, the intent is to give the stakeholders enough information to have informed conversations in their small groups. We don't want to direct you or guide you one way or another, we just want you to have information so that you then can, you know, decide what to do with that information. So then, in that first meeting then, like I said, then their task in the small group was to talk about, you know, what they believe to be the district's strengths and challenges and opportunities. And we really had a good cross-section of parents, staff, community members, board members, and, you know, really tried to put as many different stakeholder voices in each one of the groups, you know, recognizing that that kind of generates the best outcomes. So just had a couple of pictures that we took of, you know, the groups sitting there hard at work, doing their, you know, doing their brainstorming and conversations. And to me, I always say that, to me, this is the best part of the whole process, that while it's great that we have this plan, sometimes just giving people the opportunity to sit and talk about your school district, usually that's kind of the feedback or the things I hear that people remember the most who have participated in this process and saying like, like, you know, why don't we do it? Like, you know, that it's great that we, you know, make the time to do this. So this are some of the outcomes then. So that first night then, we had five groups. So like I said, they were asked to identify strengths and asked to identify challenges and opportunities. So just, you know, just kind of gave you an excerpt of what's in there. The board will have the full plan available to you that has all of the outcomes in it, but you also have all the outcomes on the district website as well. And that was important too, so that everyone had the opportunity to see that work. I think that pretty much said that there wasn't really any big surprises, right, in terms of the strengths or the challenges and things, because so, things that the board has already been aware of and talking about, but kind of good to see those things validated, right, and good to make sure that our community understands. And a lot of times, like, sometimes we, things we see as a strength are always, you know, could also be a challenge. And then also too, you might sometimes hear things in the small group conversations that it kind of helps you realize that, like, we need to tell people more about this, you know, seeing that they may not have the level of understanding of what's actually going on in the district. So sometimes it gives, you know, us an idea of things that we need to identify more in our communication. So then, then after that first meeting then, we came back the second time to say, okay, we are in the year 2030 now, we have left 2025, and that was then the focus of the conversation that evening. So had the groups kind of pretend that the district was being recognized as the model district in New Jersey for advancing student achievement, and then said, okay, you're going to be the guest speaker, talking about the accomplishments of the district. What did you do? You know, what kinds of things are taking place? How are we different from 2025 to have achieved this remarkable success? And then say like, don't let anything hold you back, like, don't, you know, let the budget hold you back or the standards and things that might influence your thinking. We really just want to know, like, what do you want for your district's students? So then ask the groups, like I said, to come up with a speech and have them give a title to their speech, and then also what would some of those visions look like in the year 2030? So this then is the work. So then that night, and so then the second meeting was the night then that we had the virtual session. And like I say, the, the hope was that we would attract more people that night. I think we ended up with three groups that night versus we had five groups then the first night. So you can just kind of see how they're setting the stage for the future, and you can see that we looked at all kinds of different things, student learning, what the learning environment looked like, energy efficiency, you know, and talked a lot too about student skills, right, and kind of what we want our students to be able to know and do to provide them the success that they need. So then we could, we said, okay, now if we took all the strengths, the challenges and the visions, and we could put them into four buckets, what would those buckets be? And so we always have some kind of a student achievement one, so in this case, the bucket is teaching and learning, inspiring innovation, so then that was one of the goal areas, a culture of respect and well-being, future-focused facilities, and building community. So those then became kind of the four goal areas then, that were the pillars of the strategic plan. So then kind of in between that second meeting and the third meeting, I took all the strengths, the challenges and the visions, and then separated them by those buckets, so that when people came ready to do the work for the third meeting, I mean, in the first two meetings, we were all kind of essentially doing the same work. We were all identifying strengths, challenges and visions. And then in this third meeting, you were now going to be specialized in your particular goal area. So then each group just focused on one of those four buckets and then had that data separated by their bucket. And then we're tasked with writing one big broad goal statement. If we think about the fact that this plan is relevant for five years, so the goal statement has to be broad enough to be relevant during that time period. But then we also then needed to kind of break that big broad goal statement down into some kind of smaller, more meaningful parts, so that we would be able to give the administration and staff more direction about, you know, what we want to see in those action plans, recognizing that we still needed to stay in the what. So even though we broke it down into smaller parts, they were almost like mini-goal statements, you know, still kind of like a smaller what. So this then is kind of the outcome of the work then of the four groups. So this is essentially kind of what your plan is. So the group, like I said, that had the teaching and learning, inspiring innovation, their goal statement was to provide meaningful learning to inspire student engagement and achievement. So again, that's kind of that bigger, broader goal statement, right? And then their objectives were to increase innovative learning opportunities, and they gave some ways to do that, create a culture of awareness and empathy towards varied learners, to support dedicated staff by providing professional development, and use data to support diverse learning opportunities focused on students' needs. So again, now you're kind of getting a sense then of what direction then if the administration and staff are going to write those action plans, we now have given them some more direction as to what that, you know, would look like. And the group for culture of respect and well-being, their goal statement was to foster a school community where all are safe, respected and valued. And then the objectives were, you know, a program for peer mediation and mentoring, teaching students to advocate for themselves and others, promote the value of interpersonal connections, and teach students strategies to self-regulate for their emotional well-being. So again, we're continuing to focus on the needs of the students, which again was a major part of this plan. The next one looked at your facilities, and so said to assess and enhance existing facilities to promote a safe, modern and adaptable learning environment while sustaining a vision to accommodate a positive learning environment. So that then was that big broad goal statement. Talked about providing for infrastructure needs and maintenance. And then this group talked a little bit about some of the, kind of, suggested action steps or things that in their minds they would like to see for this area. The other objective looked at ensuring safety and security, and again, there were some suggested steps, a sustainable and efficient learning environment and learning spaces that are flexible and interactive. So again, making sure then that we are, you know, continuing to provide some helpful support for the goal statement. And then the fourth goal area was in building community, and it was to effectively engage all stakeholders in the success of the district. So again, the importance of, you know, recognizing the value in having everyone be part of this work that we do. So saying to streamline and tailor communication for parents in a timely manner, provide opportunities for the district to engage with external stakeholders, communicate district successes and achievements to the community, identify all communication channels to measure effectiveness, and foster relationships across schools among students and faculty. So now then that we have seen kind of all of these, you know, these four areas, these four kind of whats, you now then should be able to kind of get a vision in your head or a sense in your head of kind of what direction then the district is going to be going in the next five years. So then, like I said, then the next part of this then is to have the how piece determined or the action plans. So just kind of saying that, you know, you kind of look at it from what are the steps that need to be done, what are the resources that we need, what are the indicators of success, how will we know whether we're effective or not? So, you know, some of the things that will be looked at is kind of what's the benefit in the cost for each one of these action plans? What are we already doing? What kind of resources do we have? Prioritizing needs, some things may need to be like sequenced, so you may need to finish this before you can do the next thing. So kind of taking all of those things into consideration and the development of the action plan. Here's just a sample template of kind of what that could look like. Again, and there would be, you know, an action plan then for each one of the goals over a five-year period. And then, you know, we want to make sure then that, that this work is being used, you know, kind of saying, okay, that this isn't a plan that sits on a shelf, this is a plan that helps us move the district forward, it's a living, breathing plan, and the way that we use that is that when we have our annual goal-setting meetings, then the, kind of, the origin of where those goals are coming from are from the strategic plan, that that's how we're using that work. And that's how we're, you know, kind of telling the community that we are going to take their input and incorporate it into those annual goals, so that we are kind of moving, moving the district forward in that direction that was identified in the strategic plan. And just kind of ending it by thanking everyone and recognizing the difference that can be made when people come together to help us in this work. So that is it, unless the board has any questions for me about the plan?
Are there any questions? No, I just think we want to thank you again for helping us navigate this process. I don't think any, although we use the same framework, it's never exactly the same, so we appreciate you being there for us and helping to lead the way. And we're going to miss you the next time that we do this, for sure, but really do appreciate you making it such a success.
It has been my pleasure, and my pleasure too, to work with the board through these years. You've been a wonderful board and just, you know, a model actually for, for other boards, so I really appreciate the work that you've done and hope that, you know, you continued on the great trajectory that you're on. So just wanted to thank you, it's been a privilege.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Charlene.
Thank you, Charlene.
Okay, moving to communications.
Okay, and let me just update one thing that Charlene said. She mentioned the final report, you have that in your board folder, it's going to go on the website tomorrow. As the board's aware, a parent has requested that he be added to the school calendar next year. A copy of those messages from the parent are in the board folder.
I also got a communication from one of our students and one of our third grade students, Quinn Anthony, and she sent a letter about the name of Central Middle School, and I did respond to her and we did community relations also, discussed it. Okay, so we'll start, then we'll go right there to you, Danielle, board committee and liaison reports.
Okay, so Community Relations Committee, we had our meeting on April 2nd at 4:30. Myself, Kim, Ann and George were present. We went over the upcoming street fair, the Sterling Street Fair that's taking place on April 27th, just tying up the odds and ends of what we need to bring and what, who's going to be present. So hopefully you guys just, if you can, the closer the date gets, just let me know if you can sign up, because I think we do have a couple of different time slots that are still available. So if you are here, I know Karen's not going to be here, it's not going to be here, but if you guys can make it, that'd be great. Also, I don't know who's, I can bring some chairs, but if, I don't remember who brought the table last year, I can probably find a table.
I think I did, I can bring it again.
Okay, cool. And then we'll have like the QR budget code and things like this. We're going to do the fun facts quiz that Ann and I are going to create. Yeah, good ideas. Then, of course, we discussed that, you know, Quinn Anthony did email us, and it just provoked a really good thoughtful conversation. You know, things like this could be a little bit complicated, but, you know, we definitely, it just sparked the conversation, so thank you to Quinn for writing to us. Let me see here, as far as, the next meeting is going to be April 28th at 4:15 via Zoom, but I'm going to have to reschedule that, so just look in your emails and I'll, we'll put something together.
Okay. Any questions for Danielle? No? Okay, Crystal?
Nothing to report.
Well, we're going to go to Justin then.
Yeah, so policy met twice in the last month, March 11th and April 2nd. Karen, myself, Kim and George were in attendance. You'll see lots of policies on the agenda for us to review. I would say for the board, we also finished the New Jersey School Board's Policy Wellness Check, and you'll see two critical policies on number 27 on the agenda to adopt as part of that wellness check. And our next meeting is April 30th.
Very good, thank you. I'm going to go back to Ann.
So student achievement and the Curriculum Committee met on March 26th, and under the goal to raise academic performance, we had an update on the math program, the transition planned for next year. We had math teachers, grades K through eight, visiting either Warren and/or New Providence Schools to observe the new math program that we are using, Ex Year Ready Math, in action at these schools. And then we discussed how the new program has a nice balance of manipulatives and hands-on activities. We had, under our goal of improving student attendance, an update, there was illness over the winter and February's attendance was not as strong, we see an upward increase in March as people are beginning to feel better. We also had given out the option for people to do the NJ School Climate Survey, and that was in grades three through eight, am I correct? Yes, so we will be getting more information on that. That survey was administered, it was voluntary, and that will be something that we will look into as the administration begins to dig into the data. They will update us at next committee meetings. In terms of family engagement and district programs, we had a parent webinar that was the night of our meeting, which was March 26th. Plus, we had an update with administration attending the PTO meeting that was also on that night. I feel like March 26th was a very busy day for meetings. And in preparation for the CUSAC process, we are waiting for the calculations in regards to the student achievement, which is based to some, to a large extent on the New Jersey, you know, state testing. So that update will be coming as well, we hear from the state. For the good of the order, we had discussed the school calendar, we had some snow days that needed to be returned that are now published on tonight's agenda, right? Yeah, the updated calendar.
We actually did receive those scores, and so we're just, you know, I got confirmation as I know, I told you, I followed up with the county office, so we do have the scores. And the visit is scheduled for right after spring break on April 24th, and that's our final step in the CUSAC process. As far as attendance, March was a good month, April, the first week has started off well. I'm hopeful that no one goes on vacation this week, and we continue to have good attendance through April.
Okay. Any questions for Ann? Okay, Alex?
No report.
Okay, Katie?
Let's see, our Buildings and Grounds, forgive me, I don't have the date in front of me, but our last Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting was, I believe, the 19th. And Mark gave me a quick summary of it. The Sustainable New Jersey Trees for Schools Grant, we are reviewing the application on the website to see what qualifications we need and need to be to apply. That's since changed, and we've decided not to move forward for that because it's not appropriate for our district. We received an NLP equipment grant for breakfast carts, and the carts that we purchased from this grant have been purchased and received, and the carts can also be utilized for lunch if needed, and they were already used on, when we had the stir fry event, and it was a big success on April 1st, and it was a good event. The spring grounds work has begun to prepare the fields for sports, for baseball and softball, and they are also beginning to prep the rest of the grounds for spraying, pruning, trimming, edging, et cetera. The district's screen work, they made a final assessment of the district to see how many missing screens there are in all of our windows. The original projection was for over 130 screens, they have about 48 more screens that need to be bought for every operational window to have a screen on it, waiting to get quotes on that from vendors. So that's after doing repairs and things like that. So that's a lot of progress. The Gillette Gaga Pit has been installed, and it's been a big hit with all the kids at Gillette. And then the water testing for lead has been done, and every drinking outlet portable water source has been tested and passed on the first draw. And that is, that's all we have.
Okay. Any questions for Katie?
Oh, actually, I have, I have also another, I have the Long Hill Ed Foundation.
First of all, on March 7th, we will be having, excuse me, May 7th, forgive me, our color run. You can purchase tickets on the Long Hill Ed Foundation website, it's a wonderful event, it's on a Friday night, there's two runs, one is like a toddler trot, so kids run around, they get some color thrown at them, and they have a great time, and then we move it on a little bit later, it's a larger course, and the older kids can run around, and there's stations, and the adults sprinkle them with various colored, powdered colors, and it's a lot of fun, the teachers help, we have a lot of teacher volunteers this year, which is wonderful, because I think they had more fun than the kids last year. I think they got dirtier than the kids too. So that's a lot of fun. We have two or three food trucks coming, we have a DJ, it's a wonderful way for the community to get together and also raise a little bit of money for the Ed Foundation. So I hope everyone can come. And then finally, I just need to pull this up because there's some information on here. It's kind of our end-of-year overview of what we have accomplished this year. We sponsored a number of grants, we have the school supplies for Long Hill students in need, we have Kinabar Foot Swing, which is really helpful for students that need some more flexible seating environment. We added a personal space carpet for one of the classrooms, instrument rentals for Long Hill students in need, which is really great, it's like a scholarship fund. So we had a number of students that wanted to participate in our music program, and now they're able to rent instruments just like everyone else with this scholarship, which is really something we're excited about. We had the Newark, I don't think it's occurred yet, the Newark, the Newark Art Museum trip for the fifth graders, so that's coming up. There's a sponsorship of the Long Hill Robotics Club, which is something I'm really proud of, because we have a number of kids that qualified for Nationals. I'm not sure if they're going because they're young, but the robotics team has done quite well this year. And we also got standing desks for a couple of classrooms, we had a music master class come in for the middle school band, and then tuition assistance for forced classes for students in need, which is also something we're really pleased which is also something we're really pleased about because more kids get to participate in these after-school programs that the kids have a lot of fun with. So um and then uh there's always ways for people to give. If they're interested, reach out to Long Hill. Um and we are looking for sponsors and donations and um volunteers. So that is it. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Katie?
No.
Okay, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you. I can't believe it's that time of year when we um prepare to administer the NJSLA. Uh Ms. Backer sent an email with important information on Friday. Encourage everyone to take a look at that in your email box. Uh Testing at Central has been pushed back a week from uh the past practice, and it now it will be administered from May 5th through 13th, and at Millington from May 7th through 19th. Ms. Backer also communicated about our Summer Institute. We're pleased that we can continue uh this program for another summer. The New Jersey School Performance Reports for 2023-24, the data from last school year, are available now on the uh NJ DOE website. A range of data is available about all New Jersey districts and schools. We have our report on our website under our District tab. Um we have the District tab. Uh you can then click on Performance Reports, and it'll take you to the embedded report and also a link to the state website. Uh the middle school musical, The Wizard of Oz, was a huge success. The students played to a full house of approximately 300 on Friday night and a sizable crowd of probably around 200 at the Saturday matinee. Uh eighth grader Samantha Sorreal was recognized as Central Middle School's NJ SBA Unsung Hero at a ceremony on Wednesday night. She was selected by our middle school faculty, who did a great job. Principal Vittarello introduced her at the ceremony with her proud parents in attendance. It was a very nice moment in the life of the school. Spring sports competition has begun. Baseball had its opening day last Thursday. The softball team got rained out today, uh but we'll be rescheduling, and the first track meet is this Thursday. We're also pleased to pilot a student mentoring program at Central, designed to promote strong relationships, improved attendance, and academic success. Gillette School held its PTO-sponsored World Dance Residency Performance on Friday. We had an overflowing crowd in the APR. Thank you to the PTO and our families for their support. On the agenda, you'll see the acceptance of Nurse Karen Freeman's retirement letter. She has served the district admirably for a long period of time. Her health office leadership, compassion, and genuine care for students and staff will be sorely missed at Millington School and throughout the district. We wish Karen good health and happiness in this next chapter. Welcome back to Alex. It's good to have you back on the board. Uh as Kim mentioned, he took the oath of office and is ready to go. Uh the revised calendar for the school years, as Danielle mentioned, is on the agenda. The revisions include a return of three unused emergency closing days. One will be the Friday before Memorial Day. And then we'll end the school year two days early, so the new last day of school is now Wednesday, June 18th. I'm sure the kids will be excited. I want to remind everyone that the Regionalization Town Hall Meeting at Watchon Hills is on Thursday, April 10th at 6:30. Last, I know Charlene left, but um we all, on behalf of the board, I just want to say we're going to miss her constant guidance and support. She's been a terrific team member. Uh she's sort of like a member of the family here at the Long Hill Township Board of Ed. So all the best to Charlene and her retirement, and with that, I'll turn it over to Robin.
Thank you. So I would like to do the um, this is Administrator's Report, or it's Secretary's Report, along with the Finance Committee, because Karen gave me all her notes on that as well. So the Finance Committee uh spoke a little bit about the breakfast program and um the positive and negative of entering the program. And we decided after some um debate and discussion uh that we were going to try to waive the program for the '25, '26 school year, and that when, and then in '26, '27, all the schools will enter, and we will actually try to go into it then. So we're going to wait for the Department of Agriculture to say whether or not we've been granted a waiver. We also spoke about the athletic bus, noting that we changed companies uh for the bus rental, mostly because valet are no longer rents buses for spring sports. They don't have buses available. And we have now gone to DAPR. Uh one of the advantages is that the fee is less, but DAPR also has an emergency number should it break down. So that's, that's a nice plus. And we are always looking for a substitute driver. So if anybody knows anybody with a CDL who wants to substitute, just in case, John has been absolutely fabulous, but people have days. And so if you notice a substitute driver, uh the application is on the website. Um we also uh want, I want to let you know that our budget was approved by the county. Um it's going to be advertised in the Echo Sentinel and the Daily Record on April 24th. That there was only one minor adjustment that they asked for, and it was just in charter school tuition. Um they gave me a different proposed number to use, and it was a difference of about $1,000. Uh and so all we did is move it from one line to another. Um April 28th, we've been asked to present the budget at the Township Committee, so I will be there, George, and any members of the board or public would like to go. There have been 29, maybe 30 now, or 35 hits uh on the budget video on the website. So everybody should know that it is there and available for them to look at. And we also have on the agenda a donation from St. Vincent's right here in um Long Hill, a five computer tables valued at about $1,000, and Millington has already grabbed them. And we thank St. Vincent's for the donation. Thank you.
Okay, all right. I also forgot Karen's report, so let me come back to. So she wanted me to give a report for the uh Ed Services Commission. Um they're going to meet on April 9th, and the previous meeting, she reported at uh the last board meeting. And then also for governance, uh the timeline for evaluation was sent out to the board. Um and the presentation proposal for the NJ SBA Conference was submitted, and we should hear in July if it's accepted. The timeline, just to give a quick review, so May 16th to the 22nd, the board will be asked to complete the CSA evaluation. Uh June 2nd, we will review the CSA evaluation in executive session. Uh June 2nd through the 11th, we'll have the ability to complete the self, uh the board self-evaluation. It's a new tool, new platform this year, so um it's not going to be exactly the same as years past. So uh just give yourself enough time to to get through it. And then June 16th, we will do uh the board review of the CSA eval, the board self-eval uh review. And then I think we decided that we probably will wait for goal-setting till September, um but uh stay tuned on that one. Any questions for governance? No? Okay. So any comments, comments from the public on agenda items? If you're not frozen out there yet? Okay, so let's go to resolutions. Um Danielle, will you move in uh number one, the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
I'll abstain.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
I think I need to abstain.
Mrs. Nyquist and Mrs. Case?
Yes. Okay, Crystal, will you move in financials, numbers two through 14?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grossclough? Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Um Ann, will you move in personnel, numbers 15 through 26?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Justin, will you move in Curriculum Number 27?
So moved. I'll second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grossclough?
Dr. Marr? Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Alex, will you move in Policy Numbers 28 through 33?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist and Mrs. Case?
Yes. Uh Katie, will you move in other numbers, 34 through 36?
So moved.
Second. Danielle? Okay. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. DeJamos?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Mrs. McLennan?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Uh any items for discussion? Other than the air conditioning? Any unfinished business, new business? Okay, any comments from the public? Okay, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you.